Good evening, everyone. It is six thirty on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the time for our monthly committee meeting. We are meeting as a committee of the whole, as we typically do. I call this meeting to order. The first item for this evening is presentation. We have Mrs. Bruce giving a presentation on onboarding.
I'll just mention that I did send you the, I know it's hard to see up here, and we looked at it today, and no matter what we did to it, we knew it was gonna be hard to see up here, but I did send it to you, and Mrs. Martin's gonna put it as an informational item on the agenda for next week, too, for the public to see as well. And I'll reference it in my superintendent's comments in case anyone's interested, but, Mrs. Bruce, take it away.
Is your, is your mic on?
All right, better?
There you go.
Okay, sorry. Hi, good evening. Okay, so the first thing I'm gonna call your attention to is that that is not a typo. I know it says I'm gonna talk about onboarding in the agenda, but I promise you there is a connection. So I thought before I jump into onboarding, which I will do, I wanted to just kind of give you an overview that this is one piece of a broader talent management framework. So we really are looking at how we engage employees, how we retain, how we attract, how we hire. So it's one piece of kind of a bigger picture. So that's why I left that up there, just to kind of make that known, and it was not a typo. So. Next slide. Okay, so I realize you can't read that from that far away, but I did want to let you know that the last eighteen months since I took this position, one of the things that we've talked a lot about, whether it's been in cabinet or in leadership or with staff members, new staff members, everybody, is just how are we, you know, onboarding and how are we making sure the employees feel welcome when they come here? And so part of that has been me just needing to do a lot of research. So if anybody is interested in any of the sources that I used, I am happy to send you any or all of these. If you wanna look at the statistics, if you wanna look at the recommendations from, you know, big organizations like SHRM, or if you wanna look at any of that, just let me know, and I'm happy to send those resources your way. You can go to the next one. Okay, but I did wanna call attention to one very specific resource. Now, you are looking at the PDE report of certifications, okay? And many of you may have already seen this, but I'm gonna go through it again because I think it's very relevant when you talk about hiring, recruiting, and especially onboarding. Okay? So look at the very, like, left-hand column beside the years. So this is from the Department of Education over a twelve-year period. I think it's most relevant for us at Northern Lebanon to look at the in-state certificates. Most of our employees are kind of born and bred in Pennsylvania. They're gonna grow up here, stay here. We're not, you know, close to a border that we're gonna be too worried about out of state, but in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, the state issued over fifteen thousand new certificates. So these are instructional ones. So kids coming out of college, new certificates, and over twelve years, we've lost ten thousand teachers. So the very bottom, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, the number is four thousand two hundred and twenty. We don't yet have PDE numbers for two thousand and twenty-three. I'm happy to update everybody next year, but that's kind of where we are. So that naturally brings up the question. Assuming that our starting salaries are pretty comparable competitive with Lebanon County, we need to make sure we are doing the best possible job to keep good people here when we get them. We need to make sure the employees feel supported and engaged, and so that's kind of led us to eighteen months of conversations of how do we do our very best with onboarding new people? Next. Before I jump in, I just wanted to say a quick thank you. They were kind of all and told, but they did it with, you know, excitement, and they were very, very helpful to me. Mr. Hurling, Ms. Wimmer, and Mr. Lugar are assistant principals, sat down with me. We did a deep dive into what they're currently doing and how we can make it better, and they all three were very excited to jump in and do this. So I just wanted to give them a little shout out. All right, so I had mentioned that onboarding is part of a larger talent management structure. So you can kind of see here with this graphic that I put it into a way that's cyclical because I think that it is. I think, you know, recruiting and hiring, onboarding and training. If we don't keep looking at it every couple of years and we don't keep getting feedback, we're not gonna continue to improve. So you can kind of see where I put this in here, but it is something that's part of a larger framework. I'm not gonna go into detail on those other three tonight, but just I wanted you to kind of see where our collective heads were when we were putting this together. Next, okay. All right, meat and potatoes, onboarding and training. So hopefully, starting July first, after we go through this with leadership at our retreat, we are gonna kind of start a three-phased onboarding program. I'm very excited about this. I think it's gonna make a huge difference. So I wanna kind of walk you through all the phases. Phase one, thank you. Phase one honestly is gonna be mostly about early communication. So one thing the research has said, and one thing that I've heard from other employees when I've talked to them, so I've sat down with some of our aides that were hired since I've gotten here, and some new teachers, teachers who have left. One thing that they said is very important is realizing what they're supposed to do after board approval. Like, the board approved me, yay, I'm a new teacher. What do I do next? You know, so phase one is really about us at the leadership district level communicating clearly, succinctly, and, you know, so they know what to do. So Brad has graciously volunteered. I only had to twist his arm a little bit, but he has volunteered to do a welcome video. And our thought there is, you know, our inboxes are often flooded with emails. We want new employees to start putting names with faces. We want them to be like, oh, I recognize him. He's the assistant superintendent. I remember the superintendent because he did the recruiting and hiring video that's up on our website. So little things like that, I'm hoping, are making a big difference. And so Brad's gonna be shooting his video in the next month or so. So I'll be happy to share the outtakes and the bloopers with you guys if you wanna see those. But part of this phase is also gonna be a couple different email communications from me, from Amy, who's the district office secretary, just to make sure they feel comfortable and confident walking in on day one.
Mrs. Bruce, just, just quick to go back to that, and that's where we're taking care of paperwork, clearances. There's a lot more to that than just Brad saying welcome.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot more than Brad.
How they're gonna get their technology and all those details that everybody wonders when they walk in the door, so.
And so part of that, too, is that we're gonna share an agenda with them for day one. One thing I'd heard from other people and part of the research is that if you walk into day one and you don't know what to expect, it's kind of an unpleasant beginning, you know? So we wanna say, okay, on day one, here is what is gonna happen. Here's what you're gonna do. Here's who you're gonna meet, and give them all the expectations before we jump in. Yeah, okay, so phase two actually is onsite day one, and that's the jumping in part, right? And so our goal for phase two is to get new people familiar with faces and familiar with their building. So day one is gonna start with the building administrator, and it's gonna kind of shift depending upon who's available, who that person supervisor might be, but day one, building administrator will meet the new employee, and they will officially do the welcome face-to-face. They're gonna take that new person around. They're gonna show them all the important people. They're gonna meet the counselor. They're gonna meet the nurse. They're gonna meet the secretaries. And I feel very strongly that even if they forget where the nurse is, they will remember that that building administrator took time for them on their first day. And I think that's really important. They're also gonna get a little Viking starter pack that's gonna include a free T-shirt. And the rationale behind this honestly is we do really fun things here, like spark the spirit days, and everybody wear your NL gear. Well, if you're a new employee and you have nothing, it's one more thing that makes you feel like an outsider, and we're trying to eliminate that. We're trying to eliminate anything that doesn't make you feel like part of the group, part of the family, and we wanna start that on day one. So building administrator is gonna walk in and say, Gary, it's great to meet you. I'm so excited you're coming. Here's your free T-shirt. You know, let's take a building tour and get you acclimated. So that's gonna be a big part of it. They're also gonna get things like a building map. You know, you go to a new hotel or a big resort, and they say, here's your room, and they draw an arrow to get to, you know, the food. We're gonna kind of do the same thing. Here's your room. We're gonna draw an arrow to get to the nurse. Here's how you get to the secretary. Another idea they didn't put on here, but that was born out of conversations with the assistant principals was decorating doors. Low cost, low energy, big bang for your buck. You know, if we put one sign on there that says, welcome to Northern Lebanon, Mr. Reese, you walk past your door and you're like, they're excited to have me. So you wanna make sure, like, our goal as administration is to make sure that the new people feel good and part of the family on day one. The other thing is that Brett from Kirk's tech team, he has been part of the onboarding process as well. And his insight was to add a technology component on day one beyond here is your laptop. We are gonna schedule a sit-down with tech for somewhere between thirty and sixty minutes, depending upon the type of employee, to not just say, here's your laptop, but here's Ed Insight, here's how you log in, here's Power School, what do you know about Power School? Here's, you know, all of our programs that we use on a, on a regular basis, make them feel comfortable. And also, you know, we can put in help tickets, which are amazing, but it's really nice to have a personal connection, and so we're trying to do that on day one. Gary, what did I forget? Okay, next one, please. So the last phase of the onboarding really is about continued connections, right? So we can have a great welcome. We can have an amazing first day, but if people fall off the face of the earth after that, then we're still leaving the employee not feeling supported. Last week, a couple of us on the admin team either participated in virtual mock interviews with LVC, or a couple of us went to the campus. And I asked, I took that opportunity to ask some of the college students, what are you looking for in an employer? And what would make you feel like your district is a new good fit? And they overwhelmingly said to me, we just want administrators who are supportive and who we know we can go to with questions. And I said, you know what? Great, come to Northern Lebanon, cuz everybody here is gonna do it. But we're gonna take it a step further, and we're gonna put this into very specific, like, benchmark check-ins that administrators need to do. So whether it's the assistant principal, whether it's a principal, whether it's, you know, director of pupil services, we are gonna have somebody check in with each new person, once between weeks one and two, once between weeks three and five, once between weeks three and, or six and eight. And these are not designed to be formal observations. These are not like, oh, I don't like how you're, you know, doing this direct instruction of this reading group. These are, how are you? What do you need? Can I help you? How's it going? You know, and we're gonna try to give them a little gift that they can take in. The gift might be three Hershey kisses. It might be a Northern Lebanon notepad. We're kind of still in the phase of talking about that, but we're gonna take in something, and it's not gonna be instruction-based. This is just gonna be to support a new employee, make sure they know they feel connected. The other common theme of the research that I referenced earlier was that social connection and sense of belonging as to why people leave. So if people are new employees and they don't feel a connection to anybody that they work with, they are much, much more likely to leave. And if you think about that PDE slide, we can't afford that. You know, the cost of turnover, even not in dollars and cents, but in manpower is, is high, so we wanna try to eliminate that as much as possible. So then the last part of phase three actually falls on the superintendent. And I have convinced Gary that at ninety days of employment, he's gonna go and celebrate with these new folks. So he's gonna walk into classrooms and make a big deal and take a picture and say, congratulations, you made it a half a year as a new Viking. And if he's on a Caribbean cruise or something, Brad's gonna do it for me, so.
All right, we have found, by the way, that when I walk in the room, it does not quite have the effect we were looking for. I have to explain why I'm there before they're happy to see me.
That is true. Yeah, we had a, we, we did a soft trial run of this the other day, and we had a few deer-in-a-headlights look, but then when he said congratulations, then they were very happy. So I think it'll be good. I really do. Yep. All right, I have two more.
Lauren, can I, real quick, so that's the ninetieth day of employment or the ninetieth day of instruction, or, cuz you said half a year.
Ninety days of employment.
Okay, okay.
Yep. Next slide. Okay, so two other quick things I wanna draw your attention to. Technically, they're not in onboarding, but they play a huge piece. One of them is stay interviews. So I've done a couple stay interviews since I've been here, but we wanna make it a practice. We wanna make it a standard thing that we do. So when we have a new employee, somewhere between twelve months and eighteen months, somebody from the admin team is gonna sit down with them and talk about why they stayed, what they liked about the onboarding process, what they liked about hiring and recruiting, and we're just gonna continue to review that feedback. We're gonna bring it to leadership meetings. We're gonna talk about it. And then as we, you know, gather more and more data from stay interviews, then we can revise as needed. And last slide. Okay, I realize this is tiny print, so I'm gonna try to talk it through. One thing that we have found that's been missing, and this actually was born from a stay interview that I did with a classified employee, is that obviously we have mentors for new teachers, but we don't have them for support staff. So if we hire a new instructional aide, or if we hire, you know, a personal care aide or something like that, we don't have a designated mentor for that person. And that's one thing that we can put into place that I think would help tremendously. So, you know, kind of our design here is that they'll apply to be a mentor. They'll go through a training program, you know, an hour or two that's paid, and then once they, once they get a mentor, then they go through a series of, these are your duties, and a lot of it is just gonna be checking on that person, you know, making sure they stop in and see them once a week. Do you have any questions? What can I tell you about the building? Can I help you with this? Can I help you with that? Kind of like a built-in buddy for three months, just to make sure we get them on the ground and feeling like part of the family. And that is everything.
Thank you. And I will say, Mrs. Bruce did a lot of interviews, and, and we understand that there, there are people that are going to go elsewhere for a variety of reasons. It's a dream job. It's the high school you grew up in. It's the, you know, we have folks that drive an hour to get to work right now, and as the impact of teacher shortage keeps hitting us, there will be openings closer to home for them, and, and we want them to do that because that's what's best for their family. But we don't, what we, what we don't wanna do is lose people because they don't feel a part of Northern Lebanon. And I think Mrs. Bruce did a great job of the research. Those links, by the way, are in the PowerPoint that I sent you, so you can look at those if you want, but interviewing people, talking to people about, you know, their experience when they first came here, and very appreciative. Any questions for her?
I have a quick, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Thank you. That's good work, important work. As you were talking about day one activities, I thought about the mentors. And, and the question popped up, do they, do the new employees meet any peers on day one, and do they meet their mentor?
Yep, great question. They will meet their mentor. I didn't put that in there only because we don't have the classified mentor program up and running yet, but on the building tour, they will be introduced to their mentor.
Perfect, thank you.
So my question is, will, will any of this relate to any of the substitutes? Whether those, like, the guest teachers or substitute teachers and the kind of onboarding that takes place for them?
Yeah, so probably not day-to-day substitutes, cuz we have a number of people who are day-to-day substitutes who might only work the first Monday of every month, right? But anybody that's a short-term or long-term substitute, we're gonna roll this out for them, too, so that they wanna come back and they wanna feel like part of the family.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Bruce. Great report. Appreciate it. We'll move to a public comment. There is no public comment this evening. Notice was given to inform the secretary by three o'clock. I understand we did not get any notices. So we'll just move on to the items for discussion in the consent calendar for this month. Dr. Messinger, just wanna walk us through it?
Five, one, two, and three are our normal items. Student activate, count cash disbursements. Item number six, that is the IU thirteen budget that is up for annual approval. We always approve the IU's budget first, because that number then is placed into our budget. Stacy, did you wanna say anything about that?
I don't have any specific comments to it, other than I know the team over there and trust that they have, you know, worked very hard on trying to do the best job they can to present us with something that's feasible for, for all districts, and you know, they, they do always remind us that they are working with our most vulnerable students. They are working with some of the toughest students, and so the budget reflects that. So, thank you.
Yep. Item six point two is asset control solutions. They will be inventorying our assets. That is to be done every five years per our insurance. It's actually also required with the new elementary school, right? Leanne, I got that right? So we were able to kind of tackle both of them at the same time with this, and so we'll get the, get that rolling. Item six point three, it was time for us to look at our auditor, and Leanne made a suggestion there for consideration. And I'll go to the next one, and then we'll come back and see if there's any further questions on, on six, but six point four is our independent contractor agreement with our bilingual services. Any questions on six, one through six, four?
I have just one question regarding the IU thirteen budget. I don't know if, if anyone can answer this or not, but how do they determine the increases for each school district? Is it across the board, or is it, is there some sort of formula that's used to determine what, why the increase, or what, or what determines the increase?
Good question. I'm very familiar with the way the CCC does it, and it is a formula. I'll have to add, if I had to bet, you know, if we're gonna buy pizza next week for everybody, I'd bet that there is a formula, and it's not a blanket amount for each. Stacy, do you know?
Yeah, I, I believe there's a formula based on the size of the district and, and those sort of things.
Right, but we'll double-check that for you, Director Lance.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven is, okay, so there's this building across the street that happens to be our new elementary building. At the end of the school year, the intention is to close the elementary schools, and then all the buildings, all Jonestown, Fredericksburg Elementary, East Hannover, and Lykdale will all be, all the students will be moving into that, as well as our sixth grade from this building. At the same time, you'll notice that there is a, and, and you can clearly read the language that it is virtually only, in name only. I talked about the benefits of closing the middle school in terms of our reporting, and because we share teachers across secondary, high school, and middle school. So those, those five buildings are, will be closing as we open up the new building. So I was asked the question, okay, what happens if that last electrical panel that we're all so fondly hoping comes on time, you know, doesn't come, and, and it's an emergency, and we need to reuse one or more buildings? The answer from Dave Jones at Stock and Leader is, we just have a resolution to reopen the buildings, and we can do that at any point in time. I believe there's also an option to extend the timeline, if I remember correctly, but I think the easiest thing, as we talked about it, was just to do a resolution to reopen them. So, but in order for us to start doing some other paperwork and, and taking care of some things, this is the resolution to close those schools. Any questions on that one?
So this is required under law?
Yes.
This is the process we have to go through. So the, the middle school, Dr. Messinger, that's because we're changing the name to the secondary school, correct? So that's why it's in name only.
That's correct, and I wanna, I wanna continue to emphasize that we have zero desire to, to change anything in terms of how we operationally do things with middle school and high school separated in a lot of cases. I mean, there, there are, there are times where they are in each other's past. That's always been the case. It's been the case since I've been here in school. But we even, you know, even if we were in a situation where there was one cafeteria, our desire would be to have a middle school lunchtime, and then maybe a ninth and tenth and eleventh and twelfth, but separate. We, we wanna continue to be as separate as possible for our seventh and eighth graders. That's not the desire. The desire here is efficiency in terms of reporting for us because of, because we share things in this building.
I have a quick question, and I hope this question is absolutely not needed, but if we would need a resolution to reopen, would we need a special meeting for that, and is there a certain amount of notice that we need to give to, to make that happen?
I don't believe a, a special meeting. You mean like we did with the Act thirty-four? I don't, I do not believe so.
Well, I mean, if it's, if it is not in an appropriate time, that it could go on a normal agenda.
Oh, well, then that's always.
We looked at the calendaring on that and feel that if we had to make a motion, we'd have the opportunity in August to do so, during the regularly scheduled time in August.
Yeah.
At that point, the time period for the panel that we're all waiting on, we'll, we'll know at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, the July meeting is, is if needed. I mean, that, that's a pretty good timeframe. We'll have a, I think we'll have a pretty good idea there, but maybe not quite, but the August would be okay.
Okay, thank you.
And we're structuring any pending sale of those buildings around that contingency, I assume, correct?
Yes. And, and as a reminder, next week, Boarding and Town Gap will be here to talk about what they proposing the uses for the East Hannover Lykdale buildings. Okay, number eight is the annual trip to the Pickering Beach Delaware Bay. It happens to be, this is, this year it happens to fall on a Sunday. There's some decision-making there in terms of trying to allow as many kids as possible in that class to go, so that avoids sports, and also it has to do with the alignment of when the full moon is. So, yeah. Number nine, we have some policies for you to look at, final adoption for six eleven and six twelve. And then tentative adoption for six oh seven and eight nineteen. And then tentative adoption for 607 and 819. A 9.3 is the guidance plan with all the attachments. So if you are really interested in doing some, some light reading, all those attachments are there for you. And, uh, last time we, we had some problems with the link, so that if you remember, we pushed it back to this month. Any questions on anything in nine?
Uh, I had a question on policy 819. Um, I read through it quickly and there were at least one, maybe a couple of references to K through five. I am not sure if that was intentional or if that was left over from the, the way that our elementary is currently structured. So I just wanted to point that out.
That's a good question. And before next week, let me take a look at that.
I think that's structured based off what the law says, but it's a good question. Yeah.
Okay, uh, an item 10, uh, we have a substitute, uh, for, for you, a classified substitute. Um, also, um, we are trying desperately to get subs in some hard-to-find class, hard-to-place classrooms. Um, some of the heavier duty, uh, learning support classrooms, autistic support, emotional support, life skills, uh, they were just having difficulty finding subs. Uh, experimenting with, uh, a slight pay rate change up to $135 per day, uh, to see if, if that appeals to anyone. Um, just trying to look at something for the rest of this year to maybe help make some decisions for next year, uh, in terms of whether or not that, that means anything to anybody. Um, but we thought we'd, we'd give that a shot and, and see how it goes. And then 10.3, employment, we have, uh, a middle school life skills instructional assistant. And, um, Melinda Hostler, uh, due to some retirements effective for next year, will be moving from a 10-month secretary to a 12-month secretary. Uh, and then finally, uh, two resignations custodians. So those are the, um, employment. Any questions on those? Okay, that is, that's our consent calendar. Um, we'll take a look into the two questions, the, uh, formula for IU 13 and the K to five for that board policy and let you know before the vote next week.
So I just texted, uh, the solicitor. She says that it's by law, the law specifies K through five. Um, so we structured the policy to comport with the law, but we've got the program.
To be clear, the law talks about suicide prevention at all grade levels. I'm going to double-check the actual range. That I don't know, but suicide prevention starts in K.
Yeah, yeah. So the question, so, uh, uh, Mrs. Say, the question that, that Director Buck said was, should our policy then say K to six? Because we have our, our new elementary school that will be K to six or, so that's, that's the nature of the question.
Yeah, presumably it should because there is suicide prevention requirements K to 12. So that should probably be updated if that's how your elementary is going to be structured. And I can double-check that. There's a link on PD that covers that.
Great, thank you. Uh, is there any, uh, desire from any director to move any of these items to, uh, discussion for next week? Okay, hearing none. Uh, any other information? Anything for the good of the board district for this meeting? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.